Nine thirty and I would like to call the Thursday, September twenty twenty six, two thousand twenty four. Regular meeting of Athabasca County Council to order. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. The items that I have noted that must be discussed are number three, public hearings. Number five point one. I'd like to add six point two. There's six point four, seven point one, seven point two, eight point one. Nine point two. And all of item thirteen, that's thirteen, one, two, three, four, and five. Did I miss any? Others, Councilor Wallack.
Uh, eight point three, please.
Councilor Wallack adds eight point three, others, Councilor Cromwell.
Um, eight point seven.
Eight point six. Council Chamsik.
Six point four.
Uh, six point four is already on. Because there's no, um, there's no, you know, the, the, the recommendation isn't clear. Uh, Council Holland.
Thank you, uh, six point one and six point three, please.
Can you repeat that, please?
Six point one and six point three, please.
Other items? So the items that we have listed for discussion, uh, are three point one. Five point one, six point one, six point two, six point three, six point four, seven point one, seven point two, eight point one. Eight point three, eight point six, nine point two. And thirteen point one, thirteen two, thirteen three, thirteen four, and thirteen five. Council Minns.
I'll move to, move the motion to.
Council Minns has moved the adoption of the agenda as amend or as amended with the approval of the motions not identified for discussion as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero, and the motion is adopted. Council Anderson.
Thank you, I'd like to move to recess the council meeting and proceed with public hearing.
Council Anderson has made a motion to recess the council meeting and proceed with the public hearing under three point one. All those in favor? Opposed, the motion is adopted eight and zero. I would like to declare the public hearing for bylaw zero one six two zero two four open. I'm Brian Hallery for Athabasca County and I'll be the Chair of the Hearing. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome everyone here today. All of council is present and I'd like to take a brief moment for introductions, beginning on my right, Council Cromwell, Council Gerlick. Uh, sending regrets, Counselor Capitanic, Council Anderson is here, Council of Wallack, Chamsik, Holland, and Minns with the administrative folks of Ms. Plurd, Ms. Blair, who are the Recording Secretaries and Communications, C A O, Mr. Beck, and Director Wilkinson, as well as Director Ombley. The Secretary for the Hearing is Bob Beck, who is the C A O for Athabasca County. Any persons who have joined the hearing in person or via Zoom and are wishing to be heard should give their full name now. Mr. Rideout, are you hoping to be heard? Uh, the public hearing for bylaw zero one six two zero two four is now open, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council of the county to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters and all comments must be directed to council through the chair. Only one person may speak at a time and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be Director of Community and Protective Services, Krista Wilkinson, will speak first to outline the background and provide an explanation of the bylaw. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Director Wil- Wilkinson will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Counselors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only consider matters raised at the hearing. Only counselors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation. And the chair will only ask the question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Before hearing from the public, I would ask Director Wilkinson to provide the background and explanation of the proposed bylaw.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this is a bylaw amendment to redistrict a nine point nine acre parcel. From agriculture to campground commercial. Uh, there's a well-established fifty stall, uh, campground on this parcel. And as council knows, um, these were, these campgrounds were, uh, approved under the previous rural district district and campground commercial is a fairly new tourist district, so for any further development to happen, um, it needs to be redistricted. Uh, the first reading of this bylaw was approved on August twenty ninth. Um, and, um, of course, the proper referrals were done um, previous to the public hearing. Thank you.
Does council have any questions or points of clarification they'd like to ask the director? Seeing none? Are there any written materials that have been submitted, Director? If so, would you read them and place some?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we have some referral responses, uh, first one is, um, at this time, Tellis has no concerns with the proposed activities. The second one, Apex Utilities has no objection to the proposed bylaw amendment. Forestry and Parks Lands Operations Division have no concerns with this bylaw amendment. If future development occurs, our department would be interested in reviewing those permits due to a proximity to a lake. Um, and the last one is Infrastructure Services has no concerns with this proposed redistricting. Thank you.
But now call upon persons wishing to speak, is there anyone wishing to speak on Zoom or present? No, the answer is no. Does council have any questions or points of clarification for the director? Uh, is there anyone who is not spoken and wishes to speak, it's a bit repetitive, isn't it? Um, finally, council, again, any questions or points of clarification? Seeing none? At this time, um, is there anyone that, does anyone feel that they have not been fairly heard? There being no further testimony, I will close the public hearing and further advise that council cannot receive further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the public hearing, I declare the public hearing closed at nine thirty eight A M. Mr. Rideout, thank you for taking the time to join us this morning, safe travels. The next item of business is six point one. Councilor Holland, you asked for that to be on the agenda, is there a motion that you would like to make?
Yes, uh, the motion that I would like to make is to, uh, forward this, uh, policy for further discussion to, uh, an upcoming, uh, committee of the whole meeting.
For further discussion, so to, to refer for further, for, for committee of the. Council Holland has made a motion to forward this policy for further discussion to committee of the whole. Is there, do you want to add comments to, uh, support that?
Thank you, um, in reviewing the policy, um, I do see, of course, it is, um, you know, working very well. However, I've noticed another policy that this, that may be able to amalgamate these two together. Um, which is ninety two oh five, which was recently, um, approved, uh, about a year ago, I guess. Um, and I was looking at a couple of other, um, municipalities in the same type of a enforcement, um, policy and found some really good, um, additions that I think that that might benefit, um, and so I just think it would be great to have that conversation.
Further discussion? Seeing none? The question is on the adoption of the motion to, uh, further, or sorry, administration, do you have anything you want to add? The question, uh, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to forward this policy for further discussion to committee of the whole, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is six and two, and the motion is adopted. I would like, uh, we're at number six point two, I'd like to move the motion on six point two. Uh, which is to approve policy two zero zero nine. Elected officials' remuneration expenses as presented. The discussion around this issue has consumed a lot of time and energy for us and for me, it's, you know, far more than it should have, and I can't think of something that's been more disruptive lately that we've had to discuss. It's a couple, the, the policy change for me is a two-part decision. The first relates to the amount and the second regard is related to the structure. And less than a year ago, taking the best advice we had, we made a decision. And while I would maintain that we made the best decision we could make at that time and with the information we had. It's apparent to me that with the new research and better data, notwithstanding what I think were everyone's best efforts, we got that wrong and missed the mark. So it seems to me there's widespread support from at the table, including from me to fix that. Years ago in my undergrad, I studied compensation systems and I, you know, would like to think I have as good an understanding as anyone at the table of the challenges of designing a system with good fit that motivate the preferred outcomes in your typical work environment. And the variability of our role complicates that a bit, but, um, with the research we have, we, uh, can look at other comparable municipalities, what was working and learn from those guys. So I, um, think that we, as we make these decisions, our system should be future focused and about enabling good candidates, strong candidates to run for these chairs. However, it's clear to me, um, that we have a collective mind and the direction we're headed is, is almost a foregone conclusion and, and I think we need to chug forward. But as I was thinking about this, I, I kind of came to the thoughts and you, you know, that, you know, I tend to write them down, so that's why I keep looking at that, but, uh, it really, it's a privilege to serve at the table and a privilege that must be earned and once earned, I think we have an obligation to do something good with that opportunity. So as members of council, I believe we're here to make change and leave the organization better than before. So we shouldn't settle where we can strive for excellence. Time and life and our days are too short to squander that time. But on that thought, for me, it's time we focus not on things that are dividing us, but on our common interests and really, our time at this table that remains is fairly short. And the choice that we have to make is how we're going to spend that time and what positive outcomes can we achieve by the end of the term. So I will tell you that I disagree with how this has come back in front of council. I've moved the motion and intend to support it because I believe it's time we refocused on solving new problems. Instead of recycling old wood decisions and I've moved it because I think it's time to put the decision to a conclusion. And, uh, and we'll accept that when it's finally put. Now, this item has been fairly thoroughly debated around the table. Um, is there anything new to add to that discussion? I'll open the floor, it, Council Anderson.
Thank you. I'd like to move to amend the motion to make the policy changes effective December first, twenty twenty four.
Take you, uh, sorry, you want to amend? To make policy changes effective December first? You have any further discussion you want, huh?
While I have opposed amending the elected officials' remuneration structure, I just because I strongly believe that council should be fairly compensated for the work they're doing on behalf of our municipality. Um, I accept that this seems to be the direction that council wishes to move in. Uh, to be fair to all counselors, I think that a reasonable compromise is to give counselors a couple of months notice of significant changes to the compensation structure. And so I think December first is a great compromise for um, all members around our table. It still implements all the changes that have been proposed and, uh, just seems like a reasonable date.
Thank you very much, and I definitely agree, we've gone around this far too often and we need to do what is right. Uh, that being said, I urge my colleagues to not vote in favor of that amendment, I think that our rate payers did not get notice when we took such a hefty pay increase. And as such, we owe it to them to do the right thing, as said, and make that change right away, so I will not be able to support that amendment.
Sorry. My microphone needs to be on, apparently. C A O Beck, you put your microphone on.
Yeah.
Oh, would you like to speak?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Council Capitanic, did you want to speak to this, we have a motion to adopt the policy two zero zero nine, elected officials' remuneration expenses as presented, amended to uh, make the policy change effective December one, twenty twenty four, and we are getting ready to vote on the adoption of the amendment.
Um, yes, I would like to speak to it, thank you, uh, for letting me into this meeting for this brief moment before my appointment, I'll be there live shortly. Um, I am in favor of the amendment and, uh, also that notice ideally should be given, I think, in any situation where uh, drastic changes are made, people should have some notice, so I agree with, uh, Council Anderson and I will be voting for that.
Further discussion? Put a check on. Okay, the question is on the adoption of the amendment, the amendment is to amend the main motion to make the policy change effective December one, twenty twenty four, all those in favor? Uh, both. The count is, uh, six and three, the amendment carries. Is there further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none? I think there's no doubt where this is headed, so the sooner we get to the vote, the better. And I, uh, I support the motion because I think it's clear what the will of the council is and quite frankly, I think we need to move on. And, uh, as a concluding remark, that's what I would say. The question is on the adoption of the motion to approve policy two zero zero nine, elected officials' remuneration expenses as presented with an effective date of December one, twenty twenty four, all those in favor?
Aye.
The count is six and three and the motion is adopted. We are at item number six point three. Councilor Holland, you asked for that on the agenda, do you have a motion you'd like to make?
Um, I don't have a motion I would like to make, um.
Can I open the floor then to someone to make a motion and then we can speak? Is anyone willing to move the recommended motion or another one? Council Cromwell?
Sorry, I really, I, I actually don't have a motion either, I think.
Then we'll seek a motion, this is not Council Walt.
To accept for information.
Okay, Council Cromwell has moved to accept for information. Do you want to, uh, speak to it first, Council Cromwell? And then we'll go back to Council Holland, who's on deck.
Yes, thank you. I personally find this to be far more operational and actually do not agree with, uh, moving forward with this at all, I think that is an administration issue to work on outstanding tax balances and not in our lane way. So I would like to see it, uh, put to bed.
Okay, Council Holland, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, um, before I, I go in, a friendly amendment to receive rather than accept. Thank you, um. So I guess I, I was reading this and I, I was hoping we could get a bit more information as to what it is that, um, is being looked for in this particular, um, uh, request for decision, um. It does mention the recommendation to direct administration to provide a more detailed reporting, but then it goes on to say that council, um, the discussion would like detailed information on how outstanding tax balances can be addressed. So in that, I went through the M G A, I think it's section four ten to four fifty seven, there's the different methods that can be used depending on if it's land or if it's not land or if it's manufactured home as to what, um, municipalities can do in order to deal with the tax arrears, so I wasn't able and I didn't have a pile of time to go through and see what we had on the books for policies or bylaws with regards to that. I don't think that we have a policy that says, you know, after three years, we're going to now, you know, exercise our rights according to the M G A. And in that, I was going to ask, is that, was that the intention was to bring forward maybe that we create a policy so that we have a better idea on how we handle after a certain time uh, obtaining those, those tax arrears and getting that in, and I wasn't sure what the intent was, so I was just looking for more information.
Um, well, I, I see you've picked up on the discussion we had last time about our spend on the traffic count, um. Council's role is to test the procedures of the organization, not to operate the organization. Our role is to test the procedures of administration, uh, so that we know how the assets that are entrusted to us are being safeguarded and managed. And so by having a better understanding, uh, of what's outstanding, it holds administration accountable to tell us these are the tax balances that are outstanding, it's X number of houses, this many oil field projects. And they can explain what they're doing to, uh, collect on, on money that is owed to the county. And, um, and by not asking for that information, we, we are not looking after the, the revenue stream that should be there, so I find that by asking forward, it creates a level of accountability where we can say, tell us what your plan is to address these items, and some of them, it might be admin providing advice that it's in the best interest of the municipality to not go after the tax arrears because there's an environmental issue on a lot. I've seen that in the past in other municipalities where certain lots, they, it would be a bigger liability to uh, run it through tax foreclosure than to ignore the taxes for eternity. Um, so it's about, uh, council fulfilling its role to uh, have administration account for how they're managing that collection stream. Other discussion, Council Anderson?
Thank you. I had also looked at this admin report and kind of questioned, okay, if we got the information, what would we do with it? And I think throughout our term, we've heard a lot through, especially R M A about uncollected oil and gas taxes and things like that. At the end of the day, I looked at it and thought, I think we, uh, have a duty to make sure that that number is available to our public. So that if they hear it in the news, they can come back and find what is it in our municipality, you know, is this something that's actually affecting us, is it something that's, you know, more centralized in central Alberta? And when I thought of that, I would actually like to see the numbers, uh, maybe with a little bit more breakdown uh, eventually, but just to see, okay, is this, how big is this problem here at home? And um, that, that's why I'd like to see the information, but I don't know how urgent it is to see it, or if it's just something as we're going through budget and we're looking at things, we could say, okay, look at all this as well and take that into consideration, I just kind of wanted those numbers to be available to our public.
Jabo, do you have a close question of clarification you'd like to ask?
Yes, please, and it would be through the chair to, um, administration. Um, in reading through the M G A, of course, it was quick, it was fast, but, um, I ran across a, a clause, um, that mentioned that um, tax arrears after a year are reported to a registrar. Is that something that we do? Is that something that's a public, uh, registration format?
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, we have an extremely professional and competent person in charge of our tax assessment, um, in this county, um. She adheres to the M G A in all respects, um, she doesn't miss a step.
Do you need to clarify that further, Council, the floor is?
So basically, I understand then that would be public information that we already report for arrears.
Mr. Chairman, yes, we, we present, um, we, we have a report, we, we comply with every aspect of the M G A with respect to our tax arrears process.
Other discussion? I mean, in speaking to it, I, I moved that because again, uh, I clarified for Council my colleague why, but I, I think I want to be clear, this is not a suggestion that the admin team is not doing their job. But a chance for us to have a better understanding of how well they're doing and, and their successes. Um, we do get tax, we're reporting it to committee of the whole at a very, very high level. That is inadequate to know, are we doing stuff, we have previously heard about how, uh, properties that are significantly in arrears and we've, uh, not taken action to, to, uh, move that recovery into a, a tax recovery type, uh, situation. And if, uh, the report that we've talked about is available, then it should be fairly straightforward for an in to provide that data to us without creating a ton of work, so I still support the, uh, motion to provide. Uh, no, this was to direct receive for information, so I, I would oppose the motion to receive it for information and, and still seek information uh, to gain that detailed reporting of outstanding tax balances, which was supported by a strong majority of council, committee and whole. Council Cromwell, you, is there any further discussion? You moved the motion, do you want a final word or shall I call a question?
No, I think, uh, the C A O summed it up, that information is already there and available. And there's nothing further that we need to do, we need to trust our administration to bring things forward and move along as they deem fit, that's why we have a C A O and he has a team.
So on the question of the adoption of motion to receive this for information, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion fails, is there someone willing to move a motion? Council Wallack?
Move the recommended motion, please.
Council Wallack has made a motion to direct administration to provide detailed reporting on the outstanding tax balances greater than two years. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question? Council Minns?
Is it, uh, the, uh, information going to be sent back to the committee of the whole or to, to council?
I think we can leave that to admin, my, my books, but what would you, would you like to amend it to direct it somewhere or are you just happy to let them pick?
Well, yeah, maybe we should just send it back to the committee of the whole for, for discussion.
Council Minns has, uh, is there any objection to adding an amendment to, um, provo- to provide a more detailed reporting of the outstanding tax balances greater than two years to committee of the whole? Seeing no objection, are you objecting to that? We'll just consider that a part of the original motion with unanimous consent, Council Gerlick, the floor is yours.
So it's reporting, it, it's just an annual report?
I think once for me.
Once.
The the motion is just to provide a single report, not to create. A lifetime's worth of work.
Yeah.
If you'd like to amend it to have it come every year at a certain date, that's would be.
Well, it seems like it would be appropriate to have it.
Maybe, maybe, I'm hoping it becomes part of the culture just of having asked for it once and then we'll start giving.
I'm prepared to just leave it lying now.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, the question is on the adoption of the motion to direct administration to provide a more detailed reporting of the outstanding tax balances greater than two years to the committee of the whole. All those in favor? Opposed, the count is uh seven and one, and the motion is adopted. Six point four is uh here. This has, there is a clear recommendation, but this item uh is. This is an item that uh is less than twelve months old, so item six point four is the reconsideration of a motion on a matter already decided by council.
We have information, please.
And, yes.
Um, when we look at the motion that you're asking to reconsider, the motion is actually for a draft policy and a rescinding. To other policies. That's not what we're doing here, so I don't believe we need to have a reconsideration.
The motion here is to uh amend the policy that we've approved within the last twelve months, and it is. The reconsideration of a matter already decided by council. And the question, in my opinion, is. The procedural biologue is just clear that there should be no discussion of a question that's been decided until a motion for reconsideration is carried. The motion coming out. Of council committee of the whole. Um, moved by Councillor Holland to recommend to council. That we reconsider twenty four dash forty one and revisit policy thirty two oh one. Is there anyone willing to move a motion for reconsideration? Um, Councillor Chamsik? Uh motions for reconsideration don't need discussion. On the question of the adoption of a motion for reconsideration, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is six and two, the two thirds majority is achieved. Is there anyone willing to move a motion regarding six point four? Councillor Chamsik?
Well, what I would like to see happen um within the definitions is just a slight change that would um. Allow a little bit more latitude for public works for some of those oddities in there. Reads pretty much the same uh laneway driveway means a rural driveway, not in a residential hamlet, multi lot. Or sub lake subdivision with the addition of where land area is assessed in square feet. As identified by Athabasca County.
The, so Councillor Chamsik, first of all, administration, do you have any comment on that? Motion or that amendment? To provide us advice? From an operational.
Good morning, council. Uh, through the chair. I would suggest that there is some leniency that the policy currently offers to look at. Larger portions on the outside of hamlets that may or may not be accessible, but it is. Still finally at the discretion of the public works manager as to whether it is safe to access a parcel with a greater. Um, so I believe that. That leniency can be achieved just based on where things have been allowed previously. Um, but that if it's not safe, that's how it would be decided by public works.
So your advice is that amendment is. But the you your advice is a.
I would suggest that if you.
The change in language?
Yeah, if you did it by square feet, that would tie the hands of public works because the resident could then claim, well, I fit into the square footage, so therefore I'm safe.
Councillor, um. Chamsik, do you want to? Well, I we have them, I haven't read the motion, so it's not on the floor yet. Do you want to? Put that on in that way, having heard the advice of the the Councillor Chamsik has the floor, I acknowledge your hand. Do you want to continue with the motion you've stated or notwithstanding the advice of the? Councillor Chamsik has moved to approve policy thirty two oh one residential driveway snow plowing. Program as amended with the addition of the language where land is assessed in square feet to the definition of laneway. And driveway. Councillor Holland, you hold your hand up.
Thank you.
Yours.
Um, so I think it, the one word that's missing would be land area. Not just land. And when we look at our assessments, uh our assessment summaries for hamlets, for example, or for smaller lots. Um, they are assessed in square feet. Whereas the larger lots are assessed in acres. And so um that would be for me where the distinction would be is when we look at our actual uh assess assessments. And what that says for land area. And that for me was the catchall um for those smaller lots, because as we see on our summaries, the smaller lots are in square feet and the larger ones are in acres. So that's where that came from. Um, I believe so. For me, it would have to definitely specify where land area is assessed. Um, and um that assessment, I don't know if we have to uh uh as per assessment summary.
I'm I'm just gonna ask uh the Councillor Chamsik, can you just clarify that you your intent was to say? Where the land area is assessed?
Yes, um, because exactly that reason, you know, some, for example, some of our uh hamlets have um. Farm area and stuff that are measured in acres as well. So, yes, land area, are were you okay with that being um friendly amendment?
Yeah, that's, that's. Um. You made the motion for not Councillor Hall. Uh. Councillor Holland, you did have the floor, did you have any further comments?
Thank you.
I cut you off for that point of clarification.
Sorry?
I said, I I had interrupted you to seek that clarification.
Oh, no, that's fine. Um, and I don't know, like I say, this is something that um, you know, would definitely be. Maybe a a consideration further for administration as well, but in just doing those those quick um. You know, searches and looking through the different hamlets, I just, I I believe that this would definitely. Still leave all the discretion in public works hands, but it gives the farms that we have inside hamlets the ability to still have their. Um service that that they once had and it not be taken away. So I think the jet objective here is to ensure that we are not um. Taking away service from people who once had it, and it seemed like that might be a catchall that would. Would benefit.
Okay, uh, Councillor Wallack, you held your hand up. No? Uh, other discussion? Um, Councillor Anderson?
Can we read the? New. Definition one more time, a little bit slower, please.
Lane, so laneway driveway means a rural driveway, not in a residential hamlet, multi lot, sorry, not in a residential hamlet. Or lake subdivision. As identified by Athabasca County, where the land area is assessed in square feet. Is that how you wrote it down, Miss Blair? No, multi lot is scratched out. Sorry, you want to add back in? Councillor Anderson, the floor is yours. Did you have any further comments?
Um. From what you just read, I think you're. Uh backwards.
Yeah.
Those who are assessed in square feet would not be included, but those who are assessed in acres would be.
No, that's why I clarified the motion, so um.
The way you read it though means. The opposite.
I'm going to speak against the proposed amendment because uh firstly. We've seen time and again how these last minute amendments from the floor create unintended consequences and whether or not. Well thought through and adequately discussed. We had a long chance to discuss this in twenty twenty three, leading up to the decision in January of twenty twenty four. We. Um, spent considerable time getting it to that point. We had a reasonable discussion at the committee of the whole the other day. And when I read the change to the amendment, to me, this makes the definition internally conflictual and basically means. Every parcel in the county uh including those in hamlets. Because if we are going to define a laneway driveway as something that is where the parcel is addressed in square feet, that means. We're going to be doing driveways and hamlets. And. We last year at this time refused to touch this policy because. We said we don't have time to provide uh notice to our residents, the winter is upon us, we kicked it forward a full year so that we could have time for notice and warning to our residents. I think that we had a discussion uh committee of the whole or council forwarded a um. Seemed. To be in favor of a couple of minor amendments. To uh address some unintended consequences that were the result of that long discussion. And uh those are supported by administration and so I'm going to vote against this because I think that it's. We have not thought that through and it's not going to work the way we think. The intent of this coming back today with from committee, the whole was clear, it was to address the cop the problem of multi lots. Uh that um. The majority felt was an unintended consequence. And also to address the uh removal of the date, which was an administrative request. Um. I think, and and the, I think the the amendment actually. Changes the definition in a way that it doesn't make sense. Further comments? Yep, so the motion that I have written is to approve policy thirty two oh one residential driveway snow plowing program as amended with the. Change to the. Text in your package to the definition of laneway driveway, which means a rural driveway, not in a residential hamlet or a multi lot. Sub. Multi lot or lake subdivision as identified by Athabasca County where the land area i- is addressed in square feet. Is assessed, sorry, it's really, I didn't write it very clearly. So where the land area is assessed in square feet, Councillor Holland, the floor, sorry, Councillor Wallack, the floor is yours.
Can we split the question when we ask, let me call a question, please?
It's not really. Is everybody okay with that kind of process? To split it between what admin the recommended one and the amended piece that came on it?
Is splitting it really not? Two different motions, the way it was kind of written, I think one would have to be defeated and then.
Yeah, it's about how do we get through it and we get the job done. Um, if you prefer.
I I just.
Feed it, we're happy to go that route.
I just don't think it can be split without changing. The intent of the motion.
It's it's kind of like a main, like this. You can view it as there's the main recommended motion and then there's kind of a collateral amendment to change the definition. I mean, that wasn't exactly what happened, but we could. We could split that into two questions if you want. Or we can just deal with it as written. There's been a request to split it, Councillor Holland, you look like you want to say something, but I'm going to give it the floor to Councillor Gerlick because his hand actually went up.
My only concern here is. I don't think we're wanting to add to the level of service. In the multi lots and whatever, but in the odd instance where people have had a sort of, I don't like to see things taken away from them, and I think. The administration. Needs to have the latitude that the policy isn't so rigid that they can't make. Those decisions and and those considerations. Uh. Like. I like policy and everything, it gives a general direction, but it's got to have some flexibility in it to serve the public and not take services away.
C O through Director Waley, is it, did I understand the uh director's comments correctly that you feel? As it was presented, it gives you adequate uh flexibility or discretion?
I I feel the current policy based on the changes. Gives adequate flexibility for those people who previously had snow flags to access this policy.
Okay. Councillor Chamsik, do you want to find over?
So those that have um, sorry, through the chair, for those that have applied this year and have been rejected, they can come back and apply again.
Uh, through the chair to Councillor Chamsik, I believe we've only had two formal rejections and they did not have driveways that were accessible by greater. Uh, the other people have been told to hold until council made a formal decision today. So we've just not cashed checks, we've not rejected.
Okay, the way I understood it, it was rejected and they were really like holders in the past, so.
Uh, no, we have, we have just told them to hold, we will not cash checks, we did not have to reissue based on council's decision.
So administration has made a recommendation, it's been modified. You want to split it or do you want to like? I just want to, what would make everybody happy in terms of process?
I think it's just as easy just to. Vote on defeat or.
Okay.
Whoever sheep shall be.
So the motion in front of us is to approve policy thirty two oh one residential driveway snow plowing program. As amended, including an amendment proposed from the floor that. The definition of lane driveway reads. Means a rural driveway, not in a residential hamlet or a multi lot. Or lake subdivision as identified by Athabasca County. Where the land area is assessed in square feet. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is defeated. Is someone willing to move? The motion? Councillor Gerlick, do you want to move the recommended motion?
Yes.
Councillor Gerlick has moved the recommended motion. Which is to approve policy thirty two oh one residential driveway snow plowing program as amended. Uh, meaning as in the version presented in your package. Is there further discussion on that? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to approve policy thirty two oh one residential driveway snow. Plow. Program as amended. I put the question. On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, count is eight and zero and a motion is adopted. Did I not provide enough time between the?
I just wanted to. I actually just wanted the actual motion read.
Yeah, I did, didn't I? Uh, to approve policy thirty two oh one residential driveway snow plowing program as amended.
Yeah, but I was gonna ask for the definition to make sure that we had the definition away. That that's the only thing with uh it's passed, so.
We are at seven point one, seven point one is uh. To give second reading to bylaw zero one six two zero two four, this is the uh bylaw for which there was a public hearing earlier this morning. Is someone willing to move second reading, Councillor Cromwell? Move second reading is zero one six two zero two four, is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none on the question, the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and second reading of that bylaw is. Adopted. Councillor Chamsik had her hand up to give third reading to uh bylaw zero one six two zero two four. Which is a land use bylaw amendment for lot four, block one, plan one, one, two, three, seven, nine, five. Within the northeast nineteen seventy one sixteen W four from agriculture district to campground, commercial C five. Is there any discussion on? The adoption of the motion to approve third reading? Seeing none? On the question, the adoption of the motion, all those in favor? And opposed, the count is eight and zero and third reading has been adopted. Seven point two is that uh bylaw zero two one two zero two four be given third and final reading as amended. Councillor Cromwell has moved that. Has moved by law zero two one, the schedule of fees by law be given third and final reading as amended. Is there any discussion on this bylaw? Councillor Minz? I I'm going to add then before we approve third reading that. While not wanting to change it in its current form, I would personally like to see us consider. Uh, over the time we've sat at this table, I think there's, you know, been significant learning for all of us and the um. The fact that we we provide services to residents, we provide services to non-residents. I'd like to. See us consider uh lower rates on uh for county residents at some of our campgrounds and day use areas. I think that we should. Uh differentiate between. Our residents and provide them a better, more benefit than than others, but I would not oppose the bylaw. If there's no further discussion, the question is on the adoption of third reading by law zero two one two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is eight and zero. And the motion is adopted. Eight point one. Is the uh. There was some uh discretion in the recommendation. Uh, before I seek a motion, I would like to ask if administration has any comments you want to add, Director Amlee or C O?
Uh, nothing to add, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Councillor Holland, would you like to move a motion?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, I would like to move the motion that council adopt policy eighty three ten eighty three ten land acknowledgement as presented. Um, with adopting option two. Option two.
So Council Holland has moved that council adopts policy eighty three ten land acknowledgement as presented with schedule A. Reading as in option two. Any, is there any discussion on that item? Council Holland, do you have anything you wanted to say in the prayer? Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none? Quite a bunch. Uh, the question is on the adoption of the motion to adopt. Policy eighty three ten land acknowledgement with schedule A reading as presented in option two. All those in favor? Opposed, the count is six and two and the motion is adopted. We are at eight point three, Counselor. Wallack, you asked for that to be on the agenda.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that council supports the Amber Valley Community Association proposed heating installation project. To the C FIP grant via letter of support and approves the group. The grant um. Funds of seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy five dollars and fifty cents for the capital project. To be released after approval of the grant and final invoice is submitted.
To be released. After final approval of the grant?
And final invoice.
And final invoice is submitted.
Mister Chair, can we have that read back one more time when you're done?
Absolutely, well, I will to read it in, but once I've got it written down, sorry. You ready, Ms. Blair?
It's similar to change the number.
But but council supports, so Council Holland has moved, the council supports the M. What did I just say? Well, so on this side, it's so often Council Holland is moving stuff, I'm I'm sorry, Council Wallack. For clarification, Council Wallack has moved that council supports the Amber Valley Community Association's proposed heating installation. Project to the community facility enhancement program C FIP. Via a letter of support and approves the group's municipal funding request. Within the application for seventeen thousand six hundred seventy five dollars and fifty cents. Sourcing the funds from the grants to organizational budget to be released after final approval of the grant. And final invoice is submitted. They get right? Council, did you have any comments you wanted to make on that?
Yeah, um, so sorry, on page one twelve, it should say. Um, at Mon Hall instead of Amber Valley Hall in the in the report. Um, so reading through this grant, uh, there's um a lot of missing information, um. And our policy states that we'll provide capital funding. So when you look at page um. One twenty three. The um attached quote says seventy nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Um, from our, it's not attached in this agenda, but from our previous agenda from September twelfth. Um, the funding is is the request is the same. Um, C FIP doesn't cover GST, so the total cost would be seventy five thousand three hundred and fifty one dollars. Um, divide that by two is thirty six thousand six seventy five fifty. Um, the organization is putting in twenty thousand dollars cash. So they don't need the thirty nine thousand five ninety five or I'm sorry, thirty thirty nine thousand five sixty. They only need seventeen thousand six seventy five fifty for their matching portion. So um, there are many mistakes in this grant, so I hope they go back and fix it. Um, but that's why um, that's for the number there.
Counselor Holland, you're on deck.
I'm good, but thank you very much for bringing that to um our attention and I was going to ask originally just. Oops, I was originally going to ask to split the question, but um with this explanation, I think that's amazing, so thank you very much.
Further discussion, Council Anderson?
On page one fourteen, the names of the president and treasurer have been redacted. And yet on the uh following page, the name of the facility operator has not been. I'm just wondering why that is.
I think in his other applications, we've uh not redacted that, so there's.
I understand redacting their contact information, but the names didn't seem.
Mister Chair, members of council, that was our oversight. Thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Pardon me?
Can you share the names?
Share the name of the applicant?
Yeah, can we know who they are, Mister C I O?
I was supposed to suspect the the intent was the oversight was not blocking out the remainder of the names, Mister Chairman. Is that, is that the oversight?
So just for clarity, in the last one we saw, the names of the officers of the organization were included for council. I. I had some trouble with the math on that one and but. So when I was looking at the total cost, total project funding and the total costs, the difference is twenty thousand dollars. Which I just thought. The spreadsheet must not be working or it doesn't. Make a lot of sense to me, I think for me, this is the largest grant we've considered and um. I I think in my personal opinion, it's ill advised to even approve it without a lot more detail. This would, uh, we have not considered the potential for other grant requests coming in the. In the uh, you know, remaining. Quarter of the year and this uh, now as amended, it does leave some some funds available, but um. I know there are a number of questions about the quotes and the reasonableness of the quotes and when I look at some of the data. Uh, that's been presented, I really struggle with the reasonableness of a lot of the things that have been provided um. And for a quest of this size, I would have hoped. That we would be able to have a lot more information on why it would take thirty hours at five hundred dollars an hour. To rent, like that's almost a full week's work, but there's a, to me, there's just, there's not enough here for me to even support seventeen thousand dollars. Um, we ask for a lot more information from a girl guides group who's looking for support to go to camp. Counselor Cromwell, you have the floor.
Thank you, it's one of those days where the Reeve and I seem to be on the same page, which is worthy of a calendar note, Ms. Blair.
Um, we're on the same page.
We are actually. I personally would like to to see them come in as a delegation, be able to talk to them maybe a little bit, get some information. I agree, this is a lot of money to be putting out and. It's not quite sitting right with me um. I am. Very much con- contemplating putting a tabling motion actually on this right now that I might get back to here in a second. Uh, pending delegation and conversation.
So let's uh go around the table, who hasn't spoken that would still may want to? Council Minz, Chamsik, Gerlick?
I'm uh.
Council Minz has the floor.
I like uh. Great catch on that, thank you very much, so I'm good.
Uh, yep, so we can. On a couple of clarifications, we've got Council Wallack, then Council Holland.
Just to clarify, I like the end of the motion says upon approval of the grant and final invoice submitted, so that's. And we're only covering the capital project, which is the furnace, which is not the labor stuff that's covered, so just to clarify.
Council Holland?
Thank you, I think I'm going back to asking to split the question. Uh, because I do not want to see um us not providing a letter of support for their uh for their grant. And so, um, if we're concerned about the the finances on the one end or you would like to table it, that's fine, but I do not want to see that a letter of support get. Ignored.
That's a reasonable split. Um, well, sorry, my opinion, that's the place you would split this question now, true. There's any further discussion or kind of move on to the question? So the question, there has been a request to split the question, the first part of the question is that council provides the Amber Valley Community Association's proposed heating installation. Project, the community facility enhancement program, a letter of support. All those in favor? Opposed, count is eight and zero and that portion of the motion is adopted. The second portion of the motion would read that council. Uh, supports the Amber Valley Community Association's proposed heating installation and approves. The group's municipal funding request within the application for seventeen thousand six hundred seventy five dollars and fifty cents. Sourcing funds from the grants to organizations budget. To be released after the final approval of the grant and final invoice is submitted. All those in favor? Opposed, count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Eight point six. Is there delegation here? Oh, you know what, we're close enough to the delegation, let's take a uh. Convenience break, we'll start at five minutes late at thirty five minutes after on my cell phone. It is Thursday, September twenty sixth, according to the agenda. We are at number five point one. Which is a delegation from Mister DeHollak. Our normal practice is to provide introductions. And uh, so I know you know most people, Jack, but uh. Let's start on um my right, Council Cromwell, you want to go ahead?
Well, good morning and welcome, Gary Cromwell up in the far north division six, thanks for being here.
Good morning, Jack, Joe Gerlock from the deep south, division one, beautiful Rochester, Parrinale area.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson, I reside in division three.
Brian Hall, we know each other. Council Wallack?
Uh, good morning, Camille Wallack, division nine, north of the river.
Morning, Mister DeHollak, Kelly Chamsik, division seven.
Good morning, welcome and thank you for being here, Tracy Holland with division five, east of Athabasca.
Hi, Mister DeHollak, division eight, Rob Minz, uh, Island Lake, Baptiste Lake area.
And then joining us from the administrative team, there's Ms. Plord, who is uh communications. Uh, etcetera, I don't know exactly the whole bit there, our recording secretary, Ms. Blair. Uh, C I O, Mister Beck, uh, the director of infrastructure behind you, Ms. Whaley. And I think that's unless someone's behind the the chair, that's everyone. Uh, just as a quick reminder, delegations are scheduled for fifteen minutes, including time and uh. Thank you for making the drive over and. Floor is yours.
Good morning and uh, thanks for introductions, I. Knew almost everybody, I I'm I'm here just to express uh my concerns over uh. What's happening with the Plamondan or or the connector road uh? I see uh over the last summer or two uh. There is the uh yellow bridge road and the Blue Jay road that are being affected by uh. By uh the. The condition of uh of the connector, people are using the Blue Jay road, it's just deteriorating as well and uh the. And the yellow uh, yellow bridge road uh. You know, if the big vehicles keep going through that road and over the bridge, that bridge is going to. Need replacing and and the roads are going to need rebuilding, and so it's not only the connector. That's affected, it's it's uh, it's the other roads, um, you know, uh. I I think I just don't know what to say, I've been uh. Working on this for so long, uh. You know, we have no high school in Grassland right now or on the north part of uh. Of the county and uh, you know, the kids have to drive or have to be driven. To Plamondan or wherever they go to high school and uh. You know, that's a concern, a safety concern to me, you know, uh. You know, that road a lot of time is uh, is impassable. Uh, people just turn around and they won't travel that road because you get an inch or two of rain. Even with this little rain we had last night, that road's not very good, uh, so it doesn't take much for that road to uh. You know, be uh impassable, uh. I don't know, like lately, we've seen, you know, there's there's buses, like red arrow buses that uh, that. Come partways down that road and they turn off, turn off on the Blue Jay road because. Of the condition of the road, you know, the alpact trucks, I've never seen so many alpact trucks. Go on the Blue Jay road or the yellow, the yellow bridge road uh, and yet uh. You know, uh, they've they've got a. They got their own road that they should be using and they're not using that road, they are using the Blue Jay road and and the and Plamondan connector. And uh, you know, there's a lot of lumber or a lot of logs coming out of the the east end there, aren't the oil tankers? I've never seen oil tankers on that road before, I don't know if they're trying to miss the the scales or whatever. I know personally, I've got phone calls uh. From people asking me if, because I could see the scales from my place, uh, are the lights on? Yeah, if the lights are on, well, they they're going to take a shortcut, modular homes, never seen modular homes, why are they going down the Plamondan connector? You know, uh, that road is just not made for for traffic like that. Uh, you know, the big farmers, you know, like, I'm not a big farmer, but I got to haul hay on the on the Blue Jay road and uh. And uh, on the uh, yellow uh, bridge road. And when the big trucks come and stuff, you know, it's it's a hazard, you know, you got to stop, get off the road because. They, you know, they're not going to slow down for you. You know, so the farmers are, you know. Catching a little bit on that one too, and just recently like um. The dust has become a problem, uh, you know, there, right now, there's thirty two residents. Living on the Blue Jay and Yellow uh Bridge Road. You know, and you get these big trucks coming on a dry day, ooh, not very good, and you know. I realize that uh you guys got to, you know, come up with the money, that's a big job and. But uh, I'd like to help you guys any way I could, you know, and that's basically all I say, and I just want to say, you know, good luck and keep. Keep working, uh, I I, you know, and I hope that we can uh get something done here soon.
Thank you, uh, Mister DeHollak, I know, you know, we met quite a long time ago and and the uh, it's been apparent to me the whole from that first meeting. How passionate you are as an advocate for your community and and the region as a whole. Um, I I hope it will provide some relief to you to uh maybe just share and provide a reminder. That um. There has been a motion uh of council already. To direct administration to compile a list of hard surfacing projects for a five-year capital plan and to to. Provide that back in our twenty twenty five budget deliberations. So they can be ranked based on objective criteria and I've no doubt that this road is one that the admin is very aware of and will be. One of the ones that's first to get ranked. Um, normally, we would open the floor for questions from council, are there any questions, Council Holland?
Thanks very much, um, just a quick question with regards to the type of traffic that is um traveling down that road and forgive me for my ignorance, so. You don't know what you don't know, so I will ask, do you feel it would be beneficial to put any weight restrictions or? Type of traffic, no truck traffic, that type of thing, is that even possible on that particular section of the road?
I don't know how you can put weight restrictions on it if they're not using it, but I can see doing it on the Blue Jay road or the Yellow Bridge Road, uh. Now, you know, that Yellow Bridge Road is the one that, you know, I'm really concerned about, or we should be concerned about because it's uh. Ha, it's catching a lot of uh, a lot of shit, huh? But just to keep the people on that uh. It's just to keep the traffic on that connector, uh, they're just going all over the place, you know, try trying to take shortcuts down these little. Trails or these roads like the Blue Jay Road or or even the Goren Road, you know, they're trying to. Miss that bypass that connector in any way they could, I know there's a. There's not a big problem because they should just go down the highway and go through that port, but. People don't, don't do that, they see a shortcut, they're going to take the shortest route possible.
Council Cromwell, he'd like to, the floor is yours.
Thank you, yeah, in regards, maybe some information from my peers here, the Yellow Bridge Road is Township Road six eighty five A. And there is a uh, an old style yellow bridge that. Is getting quite uh well-used, the connectors coming from the road to the bridge are are very rough. And just painting a picture here for Mister DeHollak, you uh. You hit that at more than thirty KPH and you can take out the front end of a small vehicle right now, it's in indefinite dire need. As someone who travels all three of those roads. Very frequently, I will, you know, back up Mister DeHollak, that the traffic is not being limited now to the connector. Because of conditions, especially during any bit of rain, any breakdown, your residential roads are getting pounded out, we're seeing. Super B tankers on their charter buses.
Do, is there a question of clarification, though, Counselor?
I was clarifying the road, thank you. I was clarifying the road, thank you, and I just agree with what he's saying.
Are there more questions for any from anyone? Also Gerlick, and then Counselor, okay, Counselor Anderson and Gerlick.
Thank you. In your, for the chair, to Mr. DeHulik. In your letter, you state that you look forward to hearing the reasons why this urgent project has not begun, and I'm just wondering by what metrics you use to determine that this one was the urgent one and what other projects you compared it to.
Uh, well. I've been, uh, I I've lived in that area for seventy years now. Uh, I I don't think there's a there's a road in the county that's uh, that's in uh in more need of uh upgrading than that road. Uh, I traveled the county. Uh. I've been on council for a number of years and uh and I've been working on the on this uh this road, Mr. Minz will clarify that. So it's it's been a long time, and I and I and it's time, you know, and I I don't even, I don't really wanna say this, but I don't know, I don't even know if uh putting a five-year, uh, it's it's almost, it's it's almost, it almost has to be done immediately, I would say, you know. You know, we can live with the fact that you you know, it's gonna be on a on a five-year plan, but uh is it gonna happen? Well, you know, I'd like to know that.
Floor's remain yours.
As follow-up, um, given your tenure on council previously, we're we've asked administration to provide us with a list of different projects. What other projects do you expect to see on that list and see this one outrank them? Like, so we can be prepared.
What other project do I see on that list? Uh, I I was, I I can't, you know, I can't even express to you uh the need. Uh, like I say, I've lived there for seventy years. Uh, I I taught, you know, I I get involved in a lot of stuff in Lacklavish, Wandering River, Athabasca. There hasn't, you know, a lot of people just can't believe that that road has not been upgraded. The the local farmers, there's farmers there that have been there longer than me, and they just can't believe what the county is not doing to that road. Something's gotta be done. Uh, I don't know what's gonna happen if it's not done, but I'm certainly not uh very happy if it's not gonna be paved soon, and I'm sure the population of Wandering River uh feels that way, too. There's no shopping center in Wandering River. You know, they've gotta go shopping somewhere, you know? Yeah, and if we expect them to come to Athabasca shopping, well, it's not gonna happen, you know, it's uh, Plamondan is the the nearest town, and they're gonna shop there. And it's not only Wandering River, you know, uh, Wabaska, Calling Lake. All indigenous communities up there are tied in with the indigenous communities in around Lacklavish and Saint Paul. They're all gonna benefit, you know, I know it's gonna cost the county money, and I don't know if you guys, you know, a little bit of collaboration with these communities would work, but uh yeah, it's uh it's a tough one, I know it is, huh, because it's so far in the north, and it's, you know, it's just in the north end of the county, uh. Is the south end of the county gonna support it? I don't know if I was a counselor, you know?
Hopefully.
Right, Joe?
I hope we support things based on need and ranking, Jack, so. Um, if there's no further questions, uh, I know you've got some other time commitments today, and I wanna thank you for uh being clear and concise and speaking so well to your concerns. Um, the only really final comment I can make is that it is on the uh it it is coming for further discussion in uh in the budget process that's starting as early as next week.
Good, Brian. I'm glad I'm glad to hear that, and I wanna thank everybody for listening to me, and I hope I came out a little a little clearer, and uh you'll understand a little better where we're coming from.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a great drive.
We are coming up to eight point six.
Counselor Cromwell, would you like to move a motion?
Thank you. I'd like to move the following motion to invite the Town of Athabasca Mayor and the Village of Boyle Mayor to attend the Rural Municipalities of Alberta RMA Fall Convention scheduled for November fourth to seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Constable Cromwell has moved a motion to invite the Town of Athabasca Mayor and the Village of Boyle Mayor to attend the Rural Municipalities Convention scheduled for November fourth to seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Constable Cromwell, you made the motion, you have the option of speaking first and last.
Well, I never turned down a chance to talk. Um, I do agree that it is nice to have our friends from the village and the town attend. However, we have been to multiple RMAs. We have invited them out multiple times to talk about the same issues over and over again. There is nothing new that we're advocating for. There is nothing continued that has not been heard multiple times. I do not believe it is fair for our ratepayers to cover the cost of those other two elected officials to come to RMA. If they feel the need to attend RMA, they can do that through their own budget process, but I am not in favor of covering the fees for the village and the town at this RMA.
Other comments? Constable Anderson.
Thank you. We have seen at previous RMA conventions how the access to different government officials is fantastic. I mean, we have an incredible opportunity when we're there. And given that the Boyle Healthcare Center is still only operational during the day, doors are locked, and the lights are off at night. Um, I do think it's beneficial to have Mayor Durco at Fall RMA, um advocating for that service that not only benefits village residents, but also benefits a lot of county residents, a lot, and visitors to our region, and um, I have no no problem paying for or having the county pay for his expenses to be there. I think it is a benefit to us. He's a fantastic advocate for that facility, and we're returning those services back to our residents as well.
Are you proposing to amend then?
I would, yes, I would make the amendment to add to cover the costs of the hotel rooms and registrations.
So Counselor Anderson is having mending the motion to include the language and to cover the costs of the hotel rooms and registrations. Further comments?
Clarification. Is that amendment for both the town and the village, or the village alone, as per uh the dialogue from the Deputy Reeve?
Constable Anderson, is your intention both of the neighboring leaders, or just one?
I think my intention would be for both.
Okay. Um, and this issue's come up a few times in the past where we have differing views on the value of that uh being joined by our neighbors. Um, I think for for those folks, um, you know, there is a considerable sacrifice they make by being away for those extra days on our behalf. I know, um, I was at a breakfast earlier this fall, and and one of the uh one of the people attending there is fairly well uh connected with how things are working in the capital and made the comment to the breakfast group, not to me directly, that he he said, when I I see the leaders of the three municipalities coming in and speaking to ministers collectively with their councils, it adds a uh an incredible amount of weight to the discussion when they know there is a regional solidarity and um when they know when we speak with one voice. And I think in the grand scale, um, you know, this is not something that's wildly cost prohibitive, so I I don't have an issue with uh inviting them for our benefit to attend, because that's for me, the the invitation is for our benefit, not for as much for theirs. Uh, okay. Anybody else wanna speak, Constable Holland?
Thank you, Camille, um.
I'll read the motion again.
No, yeah, I was actually, yeah, if you could read the motion again, please.
To invite the Town of Athabasca Mayor and the Village of Boyle Mayor to attend the Rural Municipalities of Alberta RMA Fall Convention scheduled for November four to seven, and to cover the costs of the hotel room and registration, sorry, that's the main motion. The amendment is to add the words and to cover the cost of the hotel rooms and registrations. So it's two questions, but really coming back to the original uh recommended motion by administration. Constable Gerlick, did you have your hand up? Well, I don't know. That's what I was asking you. I thought I saw you put it up and then take it down, so. Okay, Constable Minz?
I uh, I totally agree. There's value to to uh having the the mayor and the two mayors with the Reeve there um most of the time. I've always been an advocate that, sure, let's get together and and do our uh, do our uh discussion with the ministers and stuff like that. But I've always been on the same wavelength of if if they think it's important, if if the other councils think it's important to have their their mayors there, just pay your own way. That's 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 all we're asking. I I think our 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 okaying the Reed to go down to to the uh AB munis, I'd have no problem with paying paying for the Reed to go there. We have a budget and everything like that, so so but to uh to keep this well, you pay for me and I'll pay for you stuff going on, it's like no, just everybody just pay their own way, be transparent in the way we roll. It's there again, it's it's a it's a small, small amounts. When you when you figure it out, it could be up around three three thousand, thirty-five hundred. But there's also, it's only fifteen hundred for them. It's it's how is, how important is it for them to go themselves? So I'm I'm on the same wavelength that uh it's great to have them there. I would not disagree with that, but I think everybody should just start paying their own way and be done with it. That's my point of view.
Okay. Um. Constable Chamsak, Wallach, Gerlick. Constable Wallach.
So I think we should reverse that thinking and saying how important it is for us to be for them to be there. Because it is important for us to have that voice, too. It's not that it's not for their benefit, it's for our benefit, so that's where the, it's not what they think is beneficial, it's what we think is beneficial.
Okay. If if there's no further discussion, we'll, of course, vote in the typical fashion on the amendment first and then create a space to speak if you need to on the main motion. The amendment.
Do I get final word?
Uh, not on the amendment. No, you don't.
Okay.
Um, did you want to speak to the amendment?
Or I I will definitely speak to the amendment then.
Okay. But on the main motion, just for clarity, you definitely will have final.
Thank you. Um, I think Counselor Mims was right on the head here. We've talked about how it's great to have you know, Mayor Durco come and talk about the Boyle Healthcare Center, and that is vital for residents of the county. But again, it's been said they're not gonna forget that Boyle's there because they don't hear from three people on one day as opposed to hearing from three people individually. Uh, we have gone through this over and over again, and I don't think there's anything more to gain by our covering the fees for two other separate municipalities to attend when the same message is being done over and over again. We are responsible for the public purse and the money that we spend as a council. And again, if they feel the need, they can attend. We have done this time and time again, and it's time to take care of our own house and our own purse.
On the question of the adoption of the amendment to add the words and to cover the costs of the hotel rooms and registrations, all those in favor? Okay, opposed, the counties three and five, and the amendment fails. Um, on the main motion, Constable Cromwell, given the do you want to speak to that a second time, this final word?
Just to replay what I just said on your head.
No, I won't let you replay that. Do you have anything new to add?
No, thank you.
Constable Gerlick?
Yeah, there's two ways of spending money. One is just to spend money, and one is to invest, and I'm having trouble determining whether it's an investment or an expenditure. Uh, the like you, and when you invest, I mean, you generally go into it with a plan, and you have something specifically planned that we it's good, it's just very open-ended. Uh, and that I don't feel comfortable with. It's I'd rather have an investment than just a plain outright expenditure.
Well, the the good news is the motion that we're going to be voting on is to invite them to attend. Constable Cromwell, I again offer you the final word. It, the question is on the adoption of the motion to invite the Town of Athabasca Mayor and the Village of Boyle Mayor to attend the RMA Fall Convention scheduled for November four to seventh, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor? Opposed. The county's seven-one, the motion is adopted. The next item is nine point two, which is calendars. Constable Anderson, let's start on the right, we'll work our way around.
Yeah. Um, on October second, there's multiplex strategic planning at eleven AM. And we've also penciled in another strategic planning session on October seventeenth at nine thirty.
That's multiplex strategic planning on the second of October at eleven AM and nine thirty on the seventeenth. Counselor Gerlick, anything to add? Yep, second Monday in October every year. Oh. So they, those ones we need to find out and out. Okay. Um, that should be fairly straightforward. Council Minz. Now, Constable Holland?
Thank you. Um, no addition, just a reminder, uh, tomorrow, twenty-seventh, there is the Run for Life for Suicide Prevention, eleven thirty, as well as a sandwich fundraiser, uh, soup and sandwich fundraiser for Pleasant Valley, and we cannot forget on the thirtieth, the Truth and Reconciliation Walk at twelve PM, beginning at the Native Friendship.
We're on, I'm sorry, we're on nine point two, not nine point one.
Yeah, I'm just reminding.
Okay, let's stay focused to the item we're on. Um, Counselor Chamsak, you have anything to add?
Um, yeah, um, on, in October twenty-fourth, on my air, there was not a town meeting, a library meeting that day.
Not?
And
Not, not a meeting?
Yes, I just, yeah, it was on the seventeenth would be the correct date.
Oh, perfect, I'm sorry.
Um, still looking for an alternate uh ASB meeting as there is a different ASB meeting that day. That date will be changed, and in November, the nineteenth is the Boyle Library, and the twenty-first would be the town. And Joe, do you and I'd have to wait to see when FCSS would be, my apologies.
Uh, Counselor, you made a comment about ASB, that's what day is that on?
On the thirtieth, that date would have to be changed for our.
Always. Okay, so that one's deleted. Constable Walk?
Uh, October eighteenth Farm Women's Meeting at eleven AM.
Eleven AM on October eighteenth Farm Women's Meeting. That's it. Um, what I can add is there is, uh, the grid, there is no Greater North meeting on the twenty-eighth. That is done, delete. The next one is in November added, I think, the twenty-fifth, which is already in the calendar. Constable. Chamsak?
Uh, sorry, I didn't catch this. Hold on here. Um, in November, I guess, also the FCSA conference, I think, is the eleventh to the fourteenth. I'd have to, or sorry, the twelfth, I guess it would be, to the fourteenth. I'd, I'll double-check those dates, or if administration wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Hey, on leave, Constable Minz, you got one down?
Yeah, actually, I just remembered, uh, November twenty-first is uh Athabasca. Athabasca Watership Council Meeting in Board Meeting in Spruce Grove. And I guess at, at this point in time, I know at our last, uh. I think it was either the committee, the whole, or just regarding the special council meetings. Is, we, we were discussing some counselors weren't gonna be able to. Uh, attend those meetings and that, um. I was told that this isn't time to actually discuss.
Special council meeting scheduled for the third of October. And the, uh, twenty-second of October for budget.
I can, I can make those meetings, but I'm just throwing it out there for other counselors.
I'm still unavailable for the third, but I also understand that we can't make everything. Um, I believe the third date was the fourteenth of November.
Yes.
Um, as long as council supports me, if I am, as of the org meeting, still on the FCSA board of. Sitting in my hotel room and zooming and missing that day of conference, I should be able to make that one.
Any other questions about the special budget, special council slash budget meetings? Uh, Counsel Cromwell, we went around the table to see if there's any dates that needed to be added for meetings. Do you have anything you wanna, um, address? And I, in terms of the other ones that have come on, you'll get a copy from Ms. Blair once we're done. Counsel, okay, Counsel Cromwell has the floor, then if he has nothing, okay, he's good. Counsel Holland, the floor is yours.
Just in, uh, double check, uh, being that our MPC meetings are so short, is it possible to look at November twenty-sixth, uh, moving over to November twenty-eight? With County Council.
I, I would, I think as in the past, recommend we let administration speak to them closer to the date because they seem to have an idea what's. Coming and then can tell us if it makes sense to move it or not.
Okay, next time around.
If you're satisfied with that.
Sure, thank you. Just on the radar.
Um, is there a motion to adopt the calendar as amended? Counsel Holland has so moved. The motion is to adopt the calendars as amended, all those in favor? Opposed, count is eight and zero, and that's adopted. It would be in order to entertain a motion to go into closed session. Counsel Mins has moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to go into closed session, all those in favor? Opposed, we are eight and zero. We'll take a minute to get ready for that. Counsel Chamsik has moved, uh, that we leave closed session. It is twelve thirty-four. Uh, any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, count is nine and zero and we have left closed session. Uh, the closed session items, uh, there are some motions resulting from that discussion. Counselor Anderson? On item thirteen point one?
Move to contract Christian Benoit to sit as a member of the, on the October eleventh, twenty twenty-four subdivision and the. Subdivision and Development Appeal Board hearing.
Counsel Anderson has moved the council, uh, contract. Christian Benoit to sit as a member on the October eleventh, twenty twenty-four subdivision development appeal board hearing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and that motion is adopted. Uh, item thirteen point two, Counsel Cromwell informed me that he would like to move a motion to. Add the following items to the agenda for discussion at tri-council, uh, meeting, economic development. Scholarship for healthcare bridging, physician advocacy for the Athabasca Healthcare Center and RPAP. Okay, that reflect your.
Wonderful.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? On the question of the adoption of the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, yeah, count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Thirteen point three, Counsel Holland has made a motion to send a draft copy of the transportation agreement to the other partners for comment. Uh, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, count is nine and zero, and that motion is adopted. Thirteen point four, um, Counselor Mins, do you wanna read it?
Sure, I can read it or, uh. Motion, and there's three of them here, uh, that administration prepare using legal counsel, a cost-sharing agreement with the summer village. For the cost of the pipeline design and construction.
And?
And that administration tender for service of a project manager to undertake the, the project. And the administration proceed with phase one engineering work, pre-design stage proposed by associated engineering.
So we have a motion that is in three parts. You can split it or we can, uh, carry on and vote. The motion is that admin prepare using legal counsel. Cost-sharing agreement with the summer villages for the cost of the pipeline design and construction. And that administration tender for services of a project manager to undertake the project. And that administration prepare a phase one engineering work, pre-designed stage proposed by associated engineering. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Uh, Counsel Anderson, regarding thirteen point five, you asked to ta, table this item to the October third special meeting?
Yes, please.
Table motions have no discussion on the question of tabling item thirteen point five to the October third special meeting, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Uh, there is no further business on the agenda, therefore the meeting of Athabasca County Council is adjourned at thirty-seven minutes after twelve.